Make a little note about how we're going to proceed tonight. We have four items on our regular agenda and we have two items that were tabled that apparently would be, could be the subject of being moved off the table and acted upon tonight. My intention is to take all of the four matters that are on the regular agenda and then if the Rudman Road application is removed from the table to deal with the chickens on Rudman Road, we'll deal with that. Then I would take our usual break and then come back and deliberate on those cases and decide those and then we'll take a very short break and do the Lighthouse Point. Because my understanding is, my expectation is that that is going to draw a fair amount of input and it's going to be a rather lengthy decision or lengthy discussion. And it, my feeling is that that project we should be focused on separately and discreetly opposed from everything else that's on the agenda. So unless there's some ultra-violent objection to that, that's how I intend to proceed. Seeing none, we'll do that. We'll now open the meeting. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, before we get underway, there's a few administrative matters that I'd like to take up. First, draw your attention to the fire exit that's located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion through the left exit and exit the building using either the north or the south entrances. Our meetings are being recorded by our Secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of a record in minutes. So when you come to the microphone, please identify yourself each time and speak into the microphone. We follow the items that they appear in the order that they appear on the agenda. Extra copies of the agenda are available near the door. Once the case has been called, the applicant or the representative of the applicant will come to the podium, identify himself or herself, state their address, pause a moment, be sworn, and then present their case. During the presentation of the applicant's case, the members of the board will have an opportunity to raise questions or engage in discussion with the applicant or their representative. When that has, process has been concluded, we will then open the case to public input. Anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding the application can come to the podium and identify themselves along with their direct, their address and direct their questions and comments to the board, not to the applicant or their representative. There are three categories of public input. We'll call them in the following order. First will be those who wish to speak in favor of the application. Then we'll hear from those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. The third category arose about a year and a half ago from someone who wanted to talk to us but not either in favor or opposed and just wanted to talk to us about the application. So if you want to talk to us in general about the application, that would be your opportunity. Once the public input portion of the meeting has been concluded, if it's appropriate, the applicant or their representative will be given the opportunity to respond and the case will then be closed. We'll move on to the next case and continue, as I said earlier, until all of the cases on our regular agenda and if it's ready, the Rudman Road case will be heard. When that's been done, we'll take a short break, then we'll return, deliberate all those cases in the order that the applicants are still present. Once that's concluded, we'll take another very short break and then we'll proceed with the application pertaining to the Lighthouse Point project. We're doing that so that, as I said earlier, so that we can just devote our attention to that one item because it's been pending on our agenda for quite some time and has generated quite a lot of interest and comment. During the deliberation portion of the meeting, no further input is allowed unless it's specifically requested by a member of the board. People are welcome to stay and listen to the deliberative portion of the meeting if you wish. If you wish to leave and are interested in learning what the outcome was, you can either watch it on TV or call the Planning and Zoning Department tomorrow morning after 9:00 a.m. and they will be glad to tell you what our decision was. So, I believe having gotten through all that, that now we're ready to take the first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on our agenda this evening is case number ZB 1611-1. Upon the matter of request by Pasero Associates, acting as agent for Mar-Danth Enterprises, for an area variance to install a pylon sign exceeding maximum allowable square footage and with less than required side setback on premises 1365 East Ridge Road in an M manufacturing district.
Good evening, I'm Matthew Moore from Pasero Associates on behalf of our client Mar-Danth Enterprises.
If you'd raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
All right, so like, like Secretary just said, I'm here to request a couple of variances. We are looking to get a variance to allow two signs on one freestanding post to increase the maximum allowable square footage from 32 square foot to 63.75 square feet and reduction of the side setback from 15 feet to nine feet. A little overview on the project, located at 1365 Ridge Road, right next to the Hampton Inn. The project consists of a car wash up front and six self-storage buildings in the back. And the sign will actually be for both properties, for both uses there. So a little bit about the variances we're requesting, on, actually on recommendation from the planning board where we already went and received site approval, they believe it would be a good idea, and we do as well, to have both signs for both uses on one freestanding post next to the access road down here in the corner of the property. It'll reduce the signage clutter along the road and it'll help direct, you know, drivers to the correct access road since they will share an access road to the property. The square footage variance, it sounds like a lot, 63.75 from 32 square foot, but when you actually analyze the signs for the different uses, which I have here. Each individual use sign is below the allowable 32 square foot. The self-storage portion side is eight by four, that's 32 square feet. And the circular Royal Car Wash sign is 31.75 square feet, so just shy of the 32. So when analyzed separately, they are allowable by code. And then the side setback, we are requesting a nine-foot setback instead of 15. Down here in the, oh yes, I'll switch it again. Down here in the corner where we're proposing that the sign goes, there are some existing utility conflicts that we're worried about and we're trying to get as much space because we have to run a water service and a gas service in that area and that's just the most ideal position for it. So that's why we're requesting nine feet instead of 15. Does the board have any questions?
If you, if you had the two independent signs that were 32 feet, how far apart would they have to be?
It'd be about...
If they were standalone signs?
They'd be about 50 feet apart. The self-storage sign would be where we're proposing the combined sign to be and the car wash would be about 50 feet off the road.
Has anybody taken a look at the fact of the, the impact on the actual visibility of the sign for the blue box self-storage portion of it? If that could be cut down, you could save yourself about eight, eight square feet less of a variance and it would mirror the size of the Royal Car Wash sign. It seems to stick out farther, both left and right of the, of the sign by about a foot. Is there consideration that you could lower that, just by that size?
Something we could consider. I don't believe our clients, that was something they originally pursued. Before the planning board suggested that we combine the signs onto one post, they were just going with 32 square foot because that's what's allowable by code and obviously they want a bigger sign to promote their property. So I think that's what they were going with by the eight by four there.
It just seems like the Royal Car Wash part of the sign is nice, nice size and the the blue box self-storage part of the sign seems a little bit large. You know, that would be a consideration of mine.
Okay, we can look into that.
Not that it would save a lot, but it would save some. Other than that, I think it's a good-looking sign and good idea that the two-on-one poll is fine with me.
All right, thank you.
Can we take another look at those signs?
Oh yes, absolutely.
Okay, I missed something here. It's the, the two smaller signs off to the side, is that what the code allows? Is that what you're talking about? Yeah?
Yeah, this is when you're looking at the sign kind of dead on, but the two foot is allowable by some code.
I'm sorry, the what?
Side view.
Side view, side view, oh.
Yeah. So you're standing right on Ridge Road, looking right at it, that's what it would look like.
Okay, is the idea that self-storage is, would the sign itself be what's attracting customers to use that? Or is there another organization or a realtor or somebody that promotes these self-storage areas in town?
Um, no, the, the primary means of advertising is the sign.
Is the sign. Okay. Thank you.
Do you know that there will be problems with the utility pole or are you afraid there will be problems with the utility pole?
Um, I, I know there will be. We might be able to move it one foot over, one and a half, get 10 or 10 and a half feet. But with, we're being forced to really put the services there, there's really no other way for us to run it without going underneath pavement, which is not ideal. So we really can't move it too much. We're kind of constricted there.
If you have that 50-foot area along Ridge Road where you could put this sign, isn't there somewhere along that 50-foot area where you could have it 15 feet back?
Not 15 feet off the road. The water main actually juts into the property a little bit, so it would, there'd be some conflict there. We could look into it though, that we might be able to find a spot where we could plow and sneak it in. But it is pretty tight in there with the water main.
So there might be a spot where you could have it 15 feet away from the...
I could look into it, yes.
I assume the reason that you're looking to put it where it is is so that the people coming, driving west on Ridge Road, don't end up driving by it and having to make a U-turn to realize that they missed the entrance to go in?
Yeah, we wanted to put it, you know, right at the access drive, so it was obvious where you need to go to get there.
And it's not going to be connected in any way to the Hampton Inn parking lot?
It will be.
It will be.
It's going to be a cross-access, yes.
So if you went past it, you'd pull into Hampton Inn and you could get over that way, but you'd have to go through the car wash area to get to the storage area?
Um, actually the...
Or is it connected in the back?
It's not connected in the back. The access drive comes in along the side here. You kind of drive through the car wash area, but they are separate.
Can you just work, work, it's not clear on my map. Point to where the sign's going to be located.
Right here.
Okay, it is clear on my map. Thank you. I see it there, but...
So you'd be driving in front of the car wash if you went in through Hampton Inn?
Yeah, if you were to come into the Hampton Inn, you'd enter and right up here off the map and you could drive down and connect here and drive right in front of the car wash and loop back around. But obviously, we're trying to avoid that. We don't want to send traffic onto the Hampton Inn site if we can avoid it.
And why is it being connected then?
Uh, there's a, there's a cross-access agreement there and the DOT likes that to kind of help with the intersection down here to the east.
Okay.
And if I may, can I provide town input on that as well? Cross-access, cross-access along East Ridge Road is ultimately desirable. It prevents folks from having to go in and out of a main corridor if they have activity or access is needed between adjacent sites. So the idea is anytime cross-access can be achieved with redevelopment, the town should be pursuing that. Monroe County DOT feels the same way. And part of the Hampton Inn approval, my understanding is that they left the cross-access agreement in place and that it would be enforced in the future if redevelopment occurred. It was subject to the planning board review.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about signs, cross-access, or anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter, move on to the next item on our agenda.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I didn't mean to just cut you off, but that's...
That's all right, thank you.
Or maybe I did. But I apologize.
Just put it to the side for me, thank you, honey.
Case number, next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1611-2. Upon the matter of request by Jeremy and Tony Beardsley for an area variance to construct a covered front porch with less than required front setback on premises 40 Nowagad, Nowadaga Drive, excuse me, in our residential rural district.
Good evening, I'm Tony Beardsley. Jeremy Beardsley reside at 40 Nowadaga Drive. We're requesting a setback variance for approximately 13 and a half feet from the 13-foot code requirement that's currently there. We're looking to build a front porch in a two-year construction with the deck being this year, next year the roof. And currently, our house is not within the 30-foot setback guidelines, so therefore the replacement entry way up to our home is not able to be permitted.
Is the deck that you're talking about building this year the one that's there?
Yes.
Okay. And it's there because?
We were, started digging holes and we really went a little bit too far, not thinking that there was going to be a problem. And went in on Monday and realized our house isn't even into the 30-foot setback, we're only 16 and a half feet. So our current front driveway that we've always thought was ours, isn't even ours.
The driveway portion that's in front of the deck?
Correct, correct.
Right.
What it was is there's concrete there that keep on every year with the salt that we need for the snow, keep on going away and away. So we pile more and pile more and it's just taken away from the surrounding area of what we have down there. So to put a front porch that's made out of wood, it'll last a lot longer and it looks better for the area surroundings.
So the deck, I talked to your husband the other day, the deck is, the idea is you are going to put a roof on the deck and that's the hopes?
Correct.
I mean, the only, it looks nice, in my opinion. It'll be nice, nice for the neighborhood, it's just the idea that you put it up before you actually got permission.
We're first-time homeowners, we didn't think that, we didn't really understand what to do and we had a whole group of people down there and it was like, oh, let's just...
Build the deck.
Continue. We, we wanted to do it the right way, but it was a little too late. And that's why we're here now.
Were there any neighborly complaints?
No. Everybody was in favor. We attached all their letters and actually, we have our neighbors here tonight.
You're going to stain the deck, can have white?
It is, yep, yep. And it's going to match the white house that we have. And the roof over the porch will be red to match the red roof that we currently have on it. So it'll all blend right together.
Any other questions or comments?
Does the town have any concerns in reference to the, obviously there are a lot of narrow streets in the town down in Somerville and stuff like that. Do they have any concerns about getting vehicles down there? Do we plow it?
I don't, I don't think the, the addition to the front of the house would affect it. There's an existing, my understanding of an existing porch or concrete that hasn't been an issue that I'm aware of. And so any alteration to the front of the house because of how it's pre-existing and non-conforming with the setback requirement, any alteration to the front of the house would require a visit to this board.
Okay. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Step right up.
Hello, my name's Teagan Ward, I live with Sarah de Vogler next to Tony and Jeremy Beardsley. They take very great care of their house and this is most definitely a big improvement for not just their house, but for the neighborhood. It looks really nice and they're going to do it well, so we're in favor.
Teagan, I'm sorry, what number?
I am at 18 Nowadaga.
Thank you.
Next. Don't be shy.
Who said I was shy?
Carmelo Oliveri, I live at 202, which is right around the little area that we live in, the flats, from the Beardsley's house. And since they moved in, they made probably a thousand percent improvement on the house, consequently the neighborhood. And they're constantly working in the house and this little bit of porch, I don't think it's significant as far as setback or anything because the big trucks even get down there, so it shouldn't be a problem at all. But I applaud them for the improvements they've been constantly making. Okay? Got that?
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application?
202.
202.
Not Nowadaga?
Legionnaire Drive.
Legionnaires, okay. Thank you, dear.
Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone like to talk to us about porches or anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next matter on our case, our agenda. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1611-3. Upon the matter of request by Mark Webster for an area variance to construct a 10-foot by 20-foot storage structure in the front yard on premises 497 Eaton Road in an R3 residential district.
Good evening, I'm Mark Webster, 497 Eaton Road.
If you'd raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
I've come before you to ask for, for variance to construct a shed, 10 by 20 in size. I have an atypical lot. The house sits at the back of, of the lot, as well as being on a corner. So I, I fit as much as I could into a small space as, as I could and I tried to place it so that there would be no obstruction as far as view from my neighbors from, from the corner and as well as, I believe, adding a good amount of, a good amount of value to the property as well as the storage for myself.
And it's going to be placed where the shelter is now on the picture that you showed us?
Correct, correct, yeah. I, I included those so you would get a visual cue to, to where it's going to be on the property.
This is not intended to be a garage, right?
Correct, correct. It's going to be strictly for storage.
And the picture of the shed that you attached as being the one that you intend to use, except that the siding would be vinyl and the roof would be metal, is that the configuration as it would sit on the lot?
Correct.
So it would open towards Washington, the doors?
The only, the only thing different is the doors would be opening to the driveway side.
All right, so the doors are going to open to Washington?
Correct.
Okay.
And it will be, it will be color matched to the house as the house sits now. The house is gray and white with a black roof and it'll, it'll be coordinated the same.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
On the, on the application of the variance, never mind, I just noticed. I was, I was looking for the size, the 10 by 20. It doesn't say it down in the variance part of it, but that's okay. So it's going to be 10 feet wide and 20 feet deep?
Correct.
And it's going to go in the spot that the tent is at, directed now? How long has the tent been there?
About six months, eight months.
Okay, thanks. All right, seeing no other questions from the board, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application?
There is a letter in our packet saying about five, six, seven...
Yes, as part of the packet, there was a, a support from six of the neighbors.
I, I went, I went around to all my immediate neighbors and shared with them all my plans and asked them, asked for their approval.
Two on Washington, four on Eaton. Yes, sir?
My name's John Luciano, I live at 506 Eaton Road. And Mark bought the house, the yard was full of trees and bushes and shrubbery that was overgrown. He cleaned it up. It keeps the house very nice and like myself, I have no basement and we have no place for storage. And it's going to look like a nice shed and it's going to be, he needs storage just like I needed storage and I was here for the same thing.
You have a similar setup in your front yard also, right?
Right. My house sits on the back of the lot. I got off-front yard, no backyard and no basement.
And you're almost directly across the street.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of the application? Anyone like to speak in opposition to the application? Or anyone like to talk about storage or anything else like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter, move on to the next application on our agenda.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1611-4. Upon the matter of request by Land Tech, acting as agent for Tim Wegman for an area variance to install an accessory structure in the front yard of a waterfront parcel on premises 630 Rock Beach Road in an R1 residential district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's John Sharaba.
You swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
This evening, I'm here representing the Wegman family. The Wegmans recently purchased this unique property at 630 Rock Beach Road. If you've been to the site or aware of it, it's at the corner of Rock Beach Road and Rock Beach Road, which is the Gold Coast extension. 630 Rock Beach Road is a unique piece of property. It's almost five acres in size, has a very large home on it and numerous outbuildings including carriage houses and boat houses and boat garages. And what the Wegmans wanted to do is build a in-ground swimming pool, generally like we all would in our backyard. Running according to town code is very specific, when you have a waterfront lot, the waterfront is your front yard. So the, the proposed pool is, is north of the house, between the house and the lake. And therefore, considered in the front yard and that's why we're here for the variance. We feel that the, the variance is in the character of the neighborhood. I provided information showing other examples of pools in the lakeside of the houses along Rock Beach Road. We also feel it won't have any negative impact to the neighbors. The view shed of the proposed pool, you won't be able to see it from any public right-of-way. There's about a 15-foot grade change from the house to where this pool is going to be. And the only person that could properly see the pool is the neighbor to the east, Mr. Zeller. And I believe Michelle Forward do a letter for Mr. Zeller stating that he has reviewed the plans and is in favor of the application. Also like to point out, there won't be any negative drainage issues or anything created by this proposed pool location and we feel that it's not a significant variance as well. by this proposed pool location, and we feel that it's not a significant variance as well. So, with that being said, I'll take any questions.
Any questions from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone like to talk to us about fronts, front yards on the water and backyards on the road?
Yeah.
Sure, come on up.
How do you do? My name is William Beany, and I live at 291 Rock Beach, which is right across the road from this property, on the west side of it. I've known the previous owner, Mr. Fox, and before him, Mr. Coco, and before Mr. Coco, Mr. the Chikonowitz, and before the Chikonowitz, Bracket Clark. And the house was built by Bracket Clark's father, George Clark. Now, I have no objection to Mr. Wegman building this swimming pool in the planned location. And I would point out something that may be of interest to Mr. Wegman. The current truck traffic through this neighborhood and along the west side of his property is utterly dreadful, and I'm serious, utterly dreadful. Tractor trailer combos, and I'm talking about thruway-style trucks, use this road, Rock Beach, as a delivery route. And it's not just once, actually, it's many times, and it's nearly out of the question to walk along the road, which is good advice to not do for the mothers with children and baby carriages who try this. And there's no lights on it at night on this road. Now, I'm wondering, you know, in an R1 residential district, I would think that there could be some restriction on coast-to-coast commercial truck traffic, truck trailer traffic through this road. And if you wanted any more information about this, I'm sure someone in the supervisor's office could call me, or the head of the DPW could contact me. Thank you.
My suggestion was going to be that you contact the town, either since it has to do with traffic, perhaps the police department, and safety, or since it has to do with heavier vehicles on highways, the public works department. Either one of them may be able to, certainly, we weren't aware that there was a significant truck traffic on that.
Oh, there very definitely is. It's very definitely a safety risk to come down through the neighborhood with the big tractor trailers, they hit the leaves, the trees, and they go back and forth, and you wonder, what are they doing here? This is not the thruway. Yes, all right, fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to address the board with respect to this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing and move on to the next item on our agenda, which would require a motion to, is somebody here from 21 Rudman Road? Yes, okay. I assume you'd like us to take it off the table?
Yes.
All right. I'll make a motion that we take case ZB 1610-2 off the table and add it on to tonight's agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no opposed, no abstentions. The board is all present. So, we can call the next case on our agenda now.
Thank you, sir. Next item is ZB 1610-2. Upon the matter of request by Brian Lucasi for a special use permit to harbor three hens with coop pursuant to Section 235-70 of Rondicoid Town Code on premises 21 Rudman Road in an R2 residential district.
My name is Brian Lucasi. I live at 21 Rudman Road.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Since the last meeting, it was requested that an amendment be presented to the board with the homeowner's signature on it, and that has been done as requested and presented.
Thank you. I believe when we were here last, there was a concern that was expressed by one of your neighbors with respect to the location of the coop. He wanted you to move it away from the corner by his house and closer to your house. Am I recalling that correctly?
Yes, Megan lived behind us, yes.
And have you had any further discussions with him?
No, I have not.
Okay. But I think you indicated the last time that you were agreeable to doing that, and I think you even said you'd prefer to have him closer, right?
Yes.
So, that would be your plan then, to move it close, closer to the house?
Yes, away from her fence, yes. Close to the house.
And how, exactly where would you plan on doing that?
Approximately seven to eight feet further from the fence.
How far would that be from your property?
I'm just trying to visualize your backyard, and you had it in the corner. So, you move it seven to eight feet closer to your house? How far from your house would that be? I don't remember the dimensions of your backyard. Maybe I can figure it out.
From the house to the back fence, it's 28 feet. So, it would be 20 feet away from the house if it was eight feet away from the back of the property line where the fence is.
And the coop itself's eight feet long?
Six, six feet.
Six feet long by two and a half feet wide?
Yes, sir.
So, if it was, if it was put at the 20th foot and then it went back toward the fence, it would actually end up closer to the fence. If it was at the 20th foot, 20th footmark, back away from the house and came forward, it would stay eight feet away from the backyard fence, right?
It was going to be parallel to the back fence, not perpendicular.
Okay, all right, that makes it even better. So, now we've got two and a half feet to discuss. So, you're gonna have the front of it 20 feet back or the front of it 18 feet back? Follow where I'm going with this? We're trying to get it away from her fence.
Yes, and we're agreeing that that was going to take place eight feet from the fence, yes.
So, then it'll be 18 to 20 feet back from your house?
Yes.
Very good. You got there. That's my fault, by the way.
We approved a special use permit for your neighbor directly across the street, right?
Yes.
Does she still have the chickens that should be approved? How long did she have those?
I'm not aware. I don't know the length of the chickens. We've only been at the house since August 15th.
And she was no longer living there, then?
They're in the process of moving right now.
All right. Have you talked about this with your neighbors?
Yes.
And did any of the neighbors indicate that there had been issues with the chickens across the road from your house in terms of coyotes, or foxes, or smells, or rats, or anything of that nature?
No.
Are you aware of anything like that?
No.
And I think you said that the coop you plan on using, you're buying from them, right?
Yes.
And is that the one that they used there, or were they making this for you?
That is the one they used.
Okay, so it's the one that we've already had experience with?
Yes.
And I think you said that you would be going down into the ground with something to go around it to keep animals from burrowing?
Yes, I have stone barrier. That's over 36 inches in length.
And how far down will it go?
It's gonna go just below, about 25, 26 inches.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, since you raised the question of rats or rodents, there's been a couple articles in the DNC over the last, I don't know, two weeks, I guess, maybe you want to send these up, concerning rats. These are primarily in the city, where they're blaming backyard chicken coops for the increase in rats in the city itself. And there's one fellow that claims he's killed 50 rats in his backyard, and he's at least blaming it on chickens. Don't know how accurate all that would be, but there's another article that has pointed the finger certainly at chickens. And rats are, as most of you know, a concern of mine around chicken coops and other facilities. And I guess I'm concerned, you know, Rochester was voted the 35th rattiest city in the country, and Rochester also allows chickens to be in the city without a variance, just a permit. More and more, we're seeing rats, even here in Rondicoid. We've had two or three comments recently from homeowners about rats over, I don't know, the past two, three months. And I think we really need to ask whether this is the kind of town we want to have as to allow and attract rats and other varmints into town. We can believe that there are other means to attract rats, and there probably are, but as the more chickens we see, the more rats we're also seeing. And I think we need to address that issue rather than stick our head in the sand and say, ah, they do it in the city, so it's okay here.
I think there's a couple differences between the city and the town. In the city, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but all you need to do is go in and pay a fee, and you get a permit that says you can have chickens in your property, right? Yes, that's correct. Right. No question. And here, we are directed under the zoning ordinance to impose conditions on each and every applicant that we feel appropriate to regulate and make it as compatible with the neighborhood as possible. So, I think the permitting process is quite different between the city and Rondicoid. Plus, while it's certainly a question as to whether chickens are something that we should have or we shouldn't have, because this is a special use permit, and counsel can correct me if I'm wrong, but the town board has already made a determination that chickens are appropriate in Rondicoid, along with goats, horses, pigeons, ducks, geese, and various other forms of wildlife that are set forth in the special use permit. And they've, having made that determination and found that it's appropriate, they've then delegated, or as some might say, passed the buck to us to take the responsibility for their decision that it's appropriate in the town. And for several years, I've indicated that it would be helpful to have a lot more information about whether there is a correlation between rats and chickens. The rats that have been reported to us all seem to be in the southeast corner of the town, not too far from a city installation that houses elephants, lions, tigers, and various other animals that might also attract rats, given their output of waste material and the storage of food material that those animals and rats might enjoy. So, I'm not sure, and that's why I asked the question about whether there been any actual reports that anyone's aware of concerning rats, or coyotes, or foxes, or any other animals, because there have been chickens on Rudman Road for at least a couple of years, as I recall. Do we know when? Does anyone recall when that was, that we, I think it was about two or three years ago that we approved her application for chickens there across the street?
Couple years ago, I think.
At least a couple. And I believe that the town had gone out six months later and come back and reported to us that the neighbors hadn't raised any complaints concerning the chickens that were across the street. So, I'm not sure that a few feet away is going to have that dramatic difference in terms of their impact. You know you have to clean it regularly.
100%.
How often do you do that?
You're interacting with the chickens on a daily basis. They need that interaction with fresh water, taking care of things. So, based upon their diet and starting them off as chickling is gonna be a little bit different than at the adult age, so regular daily care is absolutely administered, just as a dog would go outside and go to the bathroom, and the owner would clean up after that. That is exactly the same protocol with birds and hens.
All right. So, on a daily basis, on a weekly basis?
On a daily basis.
All right, well, not every homeowner does it on a daily basis. Some don't do it at all.
You're requesting three chickens, right?
Three, yes.
Your landlord's letter mentions up to six, but your request of three would be nicer.
What kind of forum we have for your chickens? Are they gonna be free to roam, or are they stuck in a cage? Describe to me the coop, the drop is gonna go on the ground, or are you going to evacuate that dirt and that scat every day, you're saying? Because I think that's the question that's being asked.
There's a drop pen that comes out of the bottom of the coop, and yes, that would be attended to.
Okay, so the scat won't be dropping onto the ground, it's gonna be in a drop pen?
Yes, that is how the coop is set up, and that is how the birds take care of their business.
Okay. Did your neighbors across the street still have the hens when you moved in?
No, they did not. And that was in August of this year.
August of this year. Do you know how long they've had it down, and why?
I know they've taken it down specifically because they're moving to a new property to expand and having not just egg-laying hens, but other types of animals as well. I just spoke with them about the coop on Halloween, with purchasing it from it and everything going well.
I know that in the past, we have imposed some conditions on having chickens in town. And correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't it kind of common not to have an agreement that a veterinarian would visit once a year and certify that these chickens are healthy?
We've imposed that, yes. And I think the last hearing, we discussed that, and you indicated you had no trouble with that, right? 100%, yes. I've already made contact with them. I have the application filled out to attend to the bird's health and wellness. And one of the aspects I wanted to ask the board, and I didn't know the appropriate way to ask the town about this, is other homeowners, because since we've been new to the neighborhood, there's been a next-door communication piece in the Mount Pleasant area where we interact with our neighbors on an online social media network. And I didn't know from the previous approval from the board for owners that have hens to maybe in an official, public way, make awareness of the other owners too for the health and wellness of birds. If one owner was to experience something, this is something that could be channeled and communicated in a very effective way, and I didn't know how to petition or ask the town about other homeowners that have egg-laying hens to communicate and share information.
You mean like a hen club?
Well, not necessarily a club, but more of an awareness of having access to those that publicly have been approved through the board and are willing to share information, but not necessarily a club. But I'm addressing the aspect of the veterinarian. If someone knows someone that's taking care of a bird versus the one I've already contacted, we have multiple resources, just saying pooling what we're doing together.
Well, it's certainly an interesting concept that you could set up a hen site, and the town, I'm sure, can tell you who we've granted special use permits to, to house hens and ducks and geese and other animals like that, depending upon how far you wanted to go, and you could contact them. I don't think that's anything that the town would necessarily be involved in setting up, but certainly those of you who hold the permits could.
What I was gonna suggest is that the applicant is certainly welcome to complete a FOIL, a Freedom of Information request, asking for the copy of records related to special use permits issued for past chicken coops. And so, this is all public, obviously, public record, so the applications, and we'd be able to provide you with at least the first page of each application. And if you wanted to pursue communication in the future, you'd have the information needed to do that.
Or you could watch hours of our meetings.
Certainly, that's one way to get the information.
Mrs. Chairman, I have one other question.
Sure.
Would you be opposed to moving the chicken coop 14 feet from the fence? Because I think the issue is dealing with the dog in the rear. Eight feet from a dog is still within my zone of concern. So, would you be interested in moving it halfway between the house and the fence? That still provide you room to use your backyard effectively? And it reduces the distance away from the dog's ability to react to it?
So, JT comes up to- So JT comes up to the fence, because when we first moved in, there, her fence wasn't installed. It's a six-foot wood, it's actually over six feet, because I'm six feet, and the fence is taller than me. It was just recently installed. Before, it was just our, the fence in our yard that went up. And positive rapport with this dog. Actually, there's dogs on all sides of us. And we interact in friendly in terms of petting, so JT would always come over to the top of the fence. She would allow him to jump up on top of the fence consistently. The bottom of our fence actually has this old, I don't know if it's from the 70s, but it's got a weaving in spot. So he interacted with the previous fence and is already currently on her fence without any type of doing. So moving the chicken coop, I don't believe is going to keep the dog off her fence since it's currently tou- touching her fence when, I am in the backyard, I can hear it. He hears our presence, he comes walking over. It's been a lot less in the fall time than it was in the summertime, because he spends less time outside. But we have very good rapport with him, and-
What type of dog?
It's a, it's a yellow lab.
Very friendly.
And he is about a, just over, he's under two years old. So it's a young, energetic, and loves to be petted, and that's really, but at the same time, I mean-
So that didn't answer my question. Would you be opposed to moving the chicken coop further, for the end to reduce any complaints?
I, I've already offered to move it eight, eight feet away from the fence, yes.
Okay, I'm saying, would you be, going 14, would that be an issue?
Yes, that would be an issue. Because I don't believe that's going to keep the dog off the fence.
So you're, so you're saying you won't move it in because, over belief, I'm just saying, in order to go the extra yard of, for this lady not to have a concern, would you be willing to move it 14 feet instead, instead of eight? Just to move that extra piece to say that you've done everything you could to reduce her concerns?
I thought I was addressing her concerns with moving it eight feet from the fence.
And I'm asking an additional question. Would you be willing to go 14?
I would have to, I have to do some measurements and, and take a little further consideration for that.
Yeah. You know, I would mention one more stat here, and I swear, this is the last time I'll talk about chickens in the CDC, but it's interesting. The CDC publishes where is most of the salmonella cases in the country that have resulted from backyard chicken flocks. And it's interesting to note that New York State's number one-
Really?
Has the highest number. I have a document here, if you want to pass that around, that shows that. Doesn't give you any detail, just the rare, raw numbers. But again, that's a concern that I raise, that most of those cases starts out with baby chicks. They get mail ordered in and so forth, and as a result, they bring disease with them in some cases. Many times, it's because there's small children in the home, they're attracted to the baby chicks, they're handling them, not washing their hands every time they touch them, and salmonella gets passed around. There's a lot published on that, on the CDC site, if you ever want to go in and read more of it. And the CDC has recommended not allowing backyard chicken flocks. I realize, as the chairman mentioned, our town does approve of them, at least now, and, but it is something to be concerned about, is the health issue.
I agree with that, but I do think that we hold our applicants to a very high standard, our residents to a high standard, and I think that this applicant, along with all the other applicants we've had, with the exception of a couple, have shown us that they have good coops, they're going to take care of them, they're knowledgeable about what they're talking about, they're passionate about it, and if they're willing to take the chickens to a vet annually and have an inspection by the town, I think that that's enough of a, of a limitation on them. In terms of the dog, I mean, 14 feet seems to be quite a limitation on someone because their neighbor has a dog. I think that might be a little excessive. What was the distance you said you would be willing to keep it away from there?
Eight feet.
Eight feet? All right, thank you.
Is there any, I haven't been in your yard, is it an open, completely open yard, or is there-
It's completely fenced in, with a chain link fence that's approximately three and a half, four feet off the ground.
Any shrubs or trees in the backyard? Is it all open?
There is a tree in the back. It would be the south, southeast corner of the yard, opposite. There are three small tree shrubs.
Okay. Which side, or are you going to put it in the middle, or which side are you going to put the, the coop on? You going to put it on the, in front of that tree, or to the left, where the tree won't be?
It would be across from where the tree wouldn't be.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Step right up.
Hi, my name is Tracy Croft, and I wrote an email about my concerns. We, our backyard is kitty corner-
I'm sorry, you live where? Your address?
Behind, I'm sorry, 2482 Tyte Avenue Extension. So the northwest corner of my backyard abuts the southeast corner of his. Concerns that I have are that we do have a fox in the neighborhood. I've run into him twice. Our neighbors have seen him daytime, nighttime, well, daytime mostly, which is more concerning, who runs through the neighborhood. I'm concerned that chickens are going to make him, make beeline right through my yard into the backyard with the chickens. We also have coyotes that live across the street and down in the ravine behind the house that's across from mine on Tyte Avenue Extension. We have a family of eagles over there as well. So we, right across the street from me is a lot of wildlife. I think they're going to be drawn to that yard with the chickens. I also have a dog, and our yards are about just a little over a tenth of an acre. It seems awfully small for chickens.
We approve chickens across the street from the applicant's property, where he lives-
I wasn't living there.
Several years ago. Did, do you or any of your neighbors have any information that those chickens created any of the problems you're concerned about?
No, I have no information about that. I don't know how long they kept the chickens. They don't have them anymore. I don't know why they don't have them.
Does the town have to be informed if they were to, chickens, you know, we approve it, they no longer have them after six months, nobody knows if they have them or not? They don't have to let the town know?
No, we haven't, we haven't imposed a condition about notifying us of the removal of chickens.
I, I just want to, I'd certainly understand your concerns, because we've, we've heard a lot of these concerns. But I seem to recall on the property across the street from the applicant, because this one, I don't, I don't think I'll ever be able to forget it, a lady said that she was afraid that a coyote might take her baby away, because the coyote was confused and thought it was a chicken or something like that. So I seem to recall at this particular house, that there was an issue with the wildlife before across the street. I thought that one was a little bizarre, that the coyote was going to take a baby. But either way, so I know that there was the concern there, and I could, does the town, I mean, if we have any complaints about these, people come, I mean, they are very happy to tell us that there are problems with that. I don't think we've ever had any problems on that street before. Not that I'm saying that, you know, that we'll take care of all of your concerns, but the other thing that we do, I think, is we have had it where we've allowed it for six months or a year, and then they come back, and if there are any complaints about it, we don't allow it to go past that point. I know we did that at the beginning, and it might have been in connection with this. So if we were to give it a temporary period of time, let's say a year, where they'd have to come back in a year and see if there were any issues, would that be something that would resolve some of your concerns?
Not really.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone like to talk to us about chicken special use permits, anything along those lines? Seeing none, is there anything you'd like to add in response to what was brought up by your neighbor?
No, I have not seen any of that.
All right, then we will close the hearing with respect to this matter. We will take a brief recess until about five after eight, and then we will come back and deliberate and make decisions on those five cases, and then we will, after a short break, kick up the lighthouse point. Assuming it comes off the table.
Well, yeah, they're big, great, and essential.
Application pertaining to 1365 East Ridge Road. Yes, okay. And with respect to the application pertaining to 40 Nowadaga Drive. Stay blank. 497 Eaton Road. 630 Rock Beach Road.
These are...
Uh... 21 Redmond Road. Yes. All right. All right, so the first... Oh, excuse me, I just left this thing about removing it from the table. Pardon me. All right, so the first case on our agenda for whom an applicant is still present is 1365 East Ridge Road. Um... This is a... Unlisted action?
Yes.
Yes.
No. Is this the signage?
Yes.
Yeah, type two.
Type two. Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah. Under any commercial project under 4,000 square feet.
All right, so type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request for the variance for this application regarding the signage with the following findings. First of all, there is a... We're putting up signs here, there's no real change to the character of the neighborhood, since it's a commercial area anyway. There are really no other alternat... Alternatives that would preclude this variance mainly because of the rather limited area around this salt project. Uh, this of the... It sounds initially like a substantial request, but when you break the signs down, as was pointed out to us, it's not all that exceedingly large. So it's not overly substantial. There should be no physical effect on the environmental conditions. We're just talking about, here again, signage. And is it self-created only from the standpoint that even though there is some possible way of spreading these signs out, it's limited because of the water pipes and other utilities and the accessibility to where the traffic would go in. So with those findings in mind, I move we approve it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I would just make one comment, considering the fact that the applicant was uncertain as to whether or not the sign could be placed nine, 10, or 10 and a half feet back. I would just state that I'm sure the board would be happy if the applicant... And we have a lot of respect for Mr. Passaro's company. If you put it... If you can do 10 feet, 10 feet.
Well, I can address that real quick.
Sure.
I could do nine, 10 feet. There's a little room to play there, but right now it's currently in the middle of proposed water and gas utilities in there. Let me feel that's the...
Actually, I don't even think we... I don't think we need... I mean, if you want to... If you want to say something, you can. You asked for nine, I think we're going to give the nine. But if you can make it nine and a half or 10, that would not be something we'd be upset with. That was all.
All right. Just because we grant doesn't mean you have to fully accept. All right. Oh, certainly. Somebody had a hard time hearing you?
(laughing).
We'll put that as a matter of public record.
(laughing).
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor. No opposed. No abstentions. We are all present, no one is absent.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda is the application pertaining to 497 Eaton Road. This is a... Is that right? Yeah. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an application or a motion with respect to this application? Hearing none, I'll move that we grant the variance with the following findings. The addition of a storage shed to the applicant's property will not result in any significant change in the character of the neighborhood. The nature of the neighborhood is such that there are other houses in the area that are configured in a similar fashion that also have storage facilities similarly placed that have not resulted in any detriment to the neighborhood. And having a home with no garage and no basement and no shed in this day and age is kind of unheard of. The alternatives that wouldn't require a variance are none. It's not a substantial request, given the configuration of the lot. The size of the shed is not at all significant or substantial. There will be no adverse physical or envi... Effect on physical or environmental conditions if the variance is granted, and it is not a self-created situation. It's created by the fact that when the house was built, it was built on the far end of the lot, and no provision was made for any storage.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. No one is absent, the board is all present. Next application.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item on our agenda is the application pertaining to 630 Rock Beach Road. This is also a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an application with respect to this matter?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I make a motion that we grant the variance as applied for based on the following factors. Um, I mean, the legal definition of front yard on waterfront property is illegal fiction. And the fact of the matter is, this is kind of the back of the house, I guess. So it will have no... Well, so that's first, it's a fiction. This has no undesirable change to the neighborhood because this is a very, very large piece of property that stands alone behind trees. No one's going to be able to really see it. Um, there are... The only alternative solution would be to put the pool on the other side of the property, but that's not what the... What the top... What the property owner wants to do. And again, the definition of front yard on lakefront property is really arbitrary. The requested variance is not substantial. There will be no adverse impact on the environmental or physical conditions. And the situation is not self-created in that the lake is where God put it.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. Nobody is absent, we're all still present. Next item on the agenda is the item that was removed from the table. The application pertaining to a special use permit for 21 Redmond Road. This is type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this matter?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the request for this variance for... Or special use permit, I should say, to have three hens housed there. Based on the following information. First of all, uh... Okay, I'm having a thought here. This is... This is special use. That's the same as the variance on... Basically, or not?
No.
Don't have to show... You don't have to show any of those factors. It's more just that there's not going to be any unreasonable health, safety, welfare issue, and whether or not you think that the applicant showed with the application materials that they're going to, you know, use the efforts that they need to in due diligence to keep the coop up and clean and all of the other standards that the board typically imposes on these types of matters.
All of the above. Unless you want me to say it all over again.
And do you want to put the conditions?
The cond... Yes, the... I think the application has made a good case for the way he knows about the chickens and take care of the chickens, and also concern for the neighborhood, too. And to just add a little bit more teeth to the whole thing. Have the chicken... Have the chickens inspected once a year by a veterinarian to certify that they're in good health. And I also, as a sort of a PS to this whole thing, was very impressed with the fact that knowledge... Spreading knowledge to other chicken owners about chickens in the neighborhood, making a little sort of a association or newsletter or something, is admirable because if somebody's having a problem, the others need to know about that. So I don't know if that would affect the actual vote on this, but I do think that is... It's got the right mindset, the right depositiveness. That's the motion.
Um, I'd just like to add the eight feet from the neighbor's fence.
You're seconding?
Second.
Second. And so the first condition is that the chickens are to be checked by a veterinarian one time a year with a certificate of health to be provided to the town. And then also that the coop is to be at least eight feet from the fence? Correct. Maximum of three chickens.
No roosters.
Would it be possible to have someone assemble the conditions that we usually impose on these so that...
It's a good idea.
We can have a sheet that says, "These are the conditions," and can just incorporate them in?
Yes, we can certainly do that for you.
Great, thank you. All right.
I think you have them covered remotely.
So it's at least eight feet from the fence, no more than three chickens.
There's usually a term... That you allow them to stay before they have to come back.
And town to inspect and report within one year. Normally, we do six months, but seeing as it's November, that would be May, which really wouldn't be much opportunity. And we'll make this for five years of the lives of the chicken, whichever is less unless the report of the town reveals an issue.
I think that's typical, yeah.
Lives of chickens in being.
No successors or...
Isn't there some rule about...
No successors or a sign.
Queen Anne's case or something like that, that has to do with lives and being?
Yeah. For sure, not chickens.
So the five years run, these three, if one dies, can be replaced?
And there's two.
And it goes down.
Yeah, there's no replacement. When the last one dies...
No replacement.
Right. All right, with those conditions, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, one opposed, no abstentions. We are all present, nobody is absent. Next item to be considered by the board pertains to the applicant at 40 Nowadaga This is also a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this case?
I'll make a motion that we approve this application. Possible change to the neighborhood, I mean, the neighborhood is what it is. It's so close to the road as it is... As it is now. Any alternatives? I don't think there is because there's no place for movement. I don't think it's a substantial request. I think it's a little bit more with safety as well. I don't think it's going to change the physical or environmental conditions if it's granted. If it's self-created, it's not really self-created because the house was there before they purchased it, and that's what they have with to live with, so...
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. We all continue to be present, and nobody is absent.
I just want to bring up the fact that this was done prior to permits.
Yes.
And even though we find that it's a nice one, and it looks nice, and it fits in, and we've given the variance, people need to know that permits are needed prior to digging the holes for the posts. Let's start.
And you don't need to go too far back in our meeting records to find instances where applicants have proceeded without permission and then sought forgiveness and not received it. So the potential always exists that if you go ahead and do it, and you don't get the town approvals, and then you come and ask for a variance and it's not granted, you will have to take it down. So that's about as much as a warning as we can give. I think we say that about every month.
And I think some of it, and the folks did mention tonight, that they are new homeowners. And being new homeowners, sometimes they don't know all the different rules. But just to spread the rumor that you do need to get the permit.
Get another suggestion for the town, when somebody buys a property in the town and the town gets word of it from the county clerk's office, perhaps a letter could be sent out that says, "Welcome to the town of Rondacoit. We have variance... We have requirements that you need permits, so before you dig, come and check with us." And that might help save some of that.
Absolutely.
Or it might not. All right, um... We are going to break until 8:30, and then we will resume. But before we break, so that we determine whether or not we need to come back, is there a motion to remove the case pertaining to 951 and 1027 Thomas Avenue and 45 Pattonwood Drive from the table?
Yes, I'll make a motion to take it off the table.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seven opposed, no... Seven in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and nobody is absent. So we will resume in about four minutes and take up the lighthouse point application. The application pertaining to 160 Denzmore Road continues on the table. And that is awaiting seeker approval, I believe, right?
That is correct. It's currently before the planning board and still undergoing secret review.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Also special use.[338.47]
Twenty-five luxury apartment units along with eight thousand square foot of commercial, parking and roadways on about five point five acres in Arunac quite. It'll be on three parcels owned by the Gilbert family, namely nine fifty-one, one thousand and seven, and ten twenty-seven, I think I got the right addresses, Thomas Avenue. The use is allowed, as you mentioned, there's no use variance. It's actually encouraged by the River Harbor zoning. The plan is to build the larger buildings first and then the later on, the structure closer to Thomas Avenue. We're in the process of getting approval for remediation of the brownfield. Since we were here last, the DEC has tentatively endorsed or approved the remedial investigation report and remedial alternatives analysis by putting them up for public comment. Once the public comment period is done later this month, we expect to get actual approval from the DEC for those documents. Tonight, we're seeking the area variances for the setbacks, which are basically from property that are part of the development, not from neighbors, as well as the overall density. The actual density variance is just for what you've referred to as the second lot, but looked at holistically. In the town of Arunac quite, we're allowed ninety-five units, we're seeking one hundred and twenty-five. However, we have pledged for the three parcels in the city of Rochester that we're also acquiring. We would not build additional units on those properties. The city Rochester doesn't have a density requirement in the zone, so we really don't have a limit other than practicalities. We would shift those units, additional units into the town of Arunac quite. The advantage being a couple, one being more better for the town. Secondly, we're staying away from neighbors on the adjoining street by not building on that triangular portion right next to their houses. There'll be no re-subdivision of the lots?
I have a question while you're broaching that subject. The number of units practically that could be built on those city lots would be how many?
I guess it's about, we have about an acre. I guess, I think Mr. Sharaba would have to answer that. I can't really, can't really say, but there's not really a height limit or, I mean, we could go up. I would think we could easily do like forty-five or so, but John, would you say, maybe we'll bring up Mr. Sharaba because he's, would be better to answer that.
Do I need to swear in again?
You were sworn in previously, you're still under oath.
Yep. As Alan was saying, there's a triangle parcel there that's over an acre in size and without the restrictions of the city of Rochester, both with density and setbacks, that we could do a large number unvertically. So I think of a footprint of fifty, each story could probably be accommodated, so we can do a lot in that area. There are some utilities in that area we'd have to watch out for, but I think a minimum of fifty units could be accomplished on that acre.
And just to clarify, the triangular piece is about seven tents, and then the other two pieces are about another three tents. So the total of the three lots in the town, in the city is about an acre. The, we're not going to be re-subdividing.
Those lots are all owned by the applicant, right?
Yes. Well, they will be. I mean, we're under contract to purchase all these lots. They're owned by Mr. Gilbert or his family. We would purchase all of them, and as came up at one of the earlier meetings, was suggested that we would put a restricted covenant on, which we would agree to, to not build buildings. We're not saying we wouldn't build, you know, there wouldn't be a driveway or parking or something at some later date, but we're pledging to not build vertical buildings.
No structures?
Yeah, I guess, depends on the definition of a structure. But we're not going to be building buildings, is what we're saying that, on those parcels. We're not going to be re-subdividing the lots for a couple of reasons. One, we're phasing the development and keeping it on separate parcels, and that really allows us to, for financing purposes, we can keep them separately, like we could finance one building on one lot and then finance another one on another lot, also for tax assessment purposes. I think it makes it cleaner. The, as you indicated, now that we have the negative declaration, you can go ahead and make a decision. We're also going to need site plan and EPod approval from the planning board, where some of the other issues would be presented to the board.
Can you just highlight briefly what those issues would be that would be before the planning board as opposed to before us?
Really, the arrangement of the structures, where they would be, how high they would be, you know, their design, where the parking lots would be, you know, that sort of thing. The landscaping, we're planning to put in a lot of trees, as you know, trees were removed from the site, we're actually going to bring back trees, but that plan would have to be, you know, exactly what we're doing has to be approved by the planning board. And we've pledged to, you know, to make it a green site, but that's really going to be up to the planning board. And based upon some of the comments and comments from the public, we originally had proposed one hundred and thirty-five units, we reduced it by ten. Some of the public said it should be mixed use, so we added the commercial and took away the ten units out front by Thomas Avenue. And this is a standalone project in the town, you know, only in the town is going to be the development here. Again, this is exactly what Arunac quite had planned fifteen years ago when the River Harbor District was put in place, multifamilies and allowed use, the comprehensive plan specifically calls for this. It's going to be a green development. The brownfield, we're going to remediate in compliance with the DEC requirements. Basically, will be a cap of either, there'll be two feet of clean soil, or as a physical barrier, or concrete or parking lots. We need to restrict the multifamily residential and commercial, we're not allowed for detached single-family, no vegetable gardens, there'll be restrictions on excavation, there'll be a site management plan, sort of somebody's digging, excavating, you may have to do testing, whatnot. And the need for the higher density is due to the high cost of environmental investigation and remediation, as well as the geotectical conditions. Some of you may recall with the bridge there, they had some major problems with the geotectical. We have to do piles, which is very expensive, because it's really all fill man-made land. In addition, we're going to be doing the parking under, the podium parking, which allows for more green space, sort of, the development to be more clustered. Traffic, we already, we did the traffic study, SOF, we supplemented, showed there really won't be an issue. So that's basically the background as far as the area variance. Standards, the benefit for this project, for both the applicant and the community, we think far outweighs any detriment. We don't really see a detriment, we're cleaning up the site, there's not going to be a traffic issue. And, you know, Arunac quite really needs apartments, luxury apartments like this, you really, compared to other communities, don't have that kind of development. As far as the actual factors, the neighborhood character, this is vacant land, you know, it's not, not being used, low-lying shrubs and trees cover the site, the larger trees have been removed. You know, there's a mix, there's single-family to the south and east, but there's commercial, there's commercial marina, and the plan, comprehensive plan calls for this. This is exactly what the comprehensive plan calls for. And it has for a long time since the nineteen ninety-nine Patton Wood Plan called for this type of development to utilize the port. As far as alternate solutions, again, the large costs we have to deal with need to be spread over more units to make it cost-effective. Frankly, we are kind of tight on our numbers. We had given you numbers back in June. Some of the extraordinary costs include, the podium parking is going to be a couple million dollars extra, the pilings, one point five, environmental soft costs about eight fifty, and environmental hard costs about eight hundred thousand. So we have over five million in extra costs. It brings our, the per-unit costs, even with one hundred and twenty-five units, is about one hundred and seventy-four thousand. And if we didn't have those extraordinary costs, it would be about one hundred and thirty-three thousand. So it's really a substantial difference in the neighborhood of over forty thousand per unit. If we did ninety-five units, with the environmental cleanup, we'd be looking at more like one hundred and ninety-one, and that's about an additional fifty-four thousand more than the cost would be without the extraordinary cost. So really, it's a huge extraordinary cost, we have to spread out over more units to make it all feasible. So that with the environmental cleanup, if we can do one hundred and twenty-five units, we reduce the costs per unit, maybe close to twenty thousand per unit, which makes it possible to do. Now, we do get a, assuming we get through the process, we will get tax credits of ten percent. However, we don't see those for a long, long time. We don't, that's not anything upfront. We could get a ten percent tax credit on the cleanup upfront, but it's not until you finish your building, get a C of O, file your tax returns, you wait about a year, you get audited by the state tax department, and eventually you get money back, but only on what buildings are completed. So it really, we would expect three to five years to be seeing those substantial tax credits, and it still doesn't bring it back to where we would be. You know, at most, we would see two million out of the five, over five million in extra costs, but the big thing is, it'll take a long time, and the, I'm not even mentioning the risk. Part of the reason you get the credits is because it's a huge risk taking on development of a brownfield site, because we could get into this, start digging our piles and find unexpected things, you know, run into some real problems. So that's part of, part of the reason, but it's not like you get all this money upfront. The problem, you've got to come up with all the money upfront.
If I could jump in, what you're talking about right now gets to the question that I have, the main question I've had all along. I think, as you know, the zoning board, we have a limited power. Our power is to grant the narrowest variance needed to achieve the benefit to the applicant. And I seem to recall that at an earlier hearing, you mentioned, and I'm hoping you can clarify this, but you had mentioned that with, I think, around a hundred units, you would just, ninety-seven, a hundred units, you would just be able to get the financing that you needed. And that seems to me to sound like what you're saying is with a hundred units, the project will be feasible, and that a hundred units is what you really need to make this financing work. So I want to make sure that I understand, in terms of the numbers that you're talking about, well, you know, it would be more this, more that, less this, less that, you're talking about them, I guess, without any concrete facts. So if it were a hundred units, would a hundred units with the financing structure that you are describing, would that be enough for you to get the financing to make this something that the investors will put their money into to make it work? Or do you need the one hundred and twenty-five units? Or do you need one hundred and fifteen units? Because I still am looking through this binder and all this stuff, I am not seeing a one-to-one relationship or something that's, you know, and I know that there's, there's no hard science for risk and return and all that stuff, but I seem to recall you saying before that ninety-seven or a hundred, you could just get the financing at that point, and that you might have needed more to make it easier or more comfortable or something to that effect. But I seem to recall you saying ninety-seven, we just barely, barely got our financing at ninety-seven units. So if you could clarify that for me.
I don't recall saying, if I said that, it was a mistake, I don't recall, whatever I said, I said, but the one hundred and twenty-five barely makes it for financing. It is really, we really frankly regret not asking for more units because, whoops. We, the one hundred and twenty, and I think maybe Alan Adams or Joe Catalani can get up.
Someone doesn't like your answer.
One document that would help would be a break-even analysis of the plan. So at what point do you break even? Because that would determine whether or not the additional units are necessary, and be more concrete.
Okay. Maybe, maybe if I could have Joe or Alan want to come up here and address that, but my understanding, we're very close on the one hundred and twenty-five, whether we can get this financed, so.
Hi, Alan Adams.
I think you were previously sworn.
I was not, sir.
You were not, then raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. In reference to the numbers, as far as where the break-even is, how the numbers work, that's kind of what I do for a living, as far as running numbers. And we did a comparison relative to one hundred and twenty-five units versus ninety-five units. And in running through it, just to, just throw some numbers out, on one hundred and twenty-five units, the net operating income, the net income before debt service, but after all expenses, are about a million three fifty on one hundred and twenty-five units, and nine hundred and seventy-four thousand thereabouts on ninety-five units. Reason that's important, we basically run our numbers down, and from an investment perspective, on one hundred and twenty-five units, the net return on investment prior to tax considerations, about five and a quarter percent versus ninety-five units, which is about two point nine two percent on ballparking a little bit. But effectively, what we do is we take the income, the expenses, the net income, capitalize it into value, come up with a value, put in, we're limited by loan to value, we're also limited by a debt service coverage ratio, effectively lenders want a one-twenty debt service, and we run through the numbers, and effectively, what it comes down to is, you know, five and a quarter is on the light side relative to the investment market. We finance a lot of projects, the larger projects, and typically investors want, I'd say eight to twelve percent cash on cash, and they effectively want an IRR of maybe eighteen to twenty percent, twenty-two percent. We're not hitting those numbers. So it's a push at one twenty-five to get to where we want to be. Longer term, we think there'll be some nice opportunities there, the brownfield will kick in, but upfront, the one twenty-five economically is needed to make this feasible for us.
And just with all due respect, your background is what, sir?
I'm a ex-banker and been in the mortgage banking business for thirty-some years. I've closed a billion two in mortgages over the last ten, twelve years or so. That's what I do for a living, so that's.
Those numbers you're talking about, your return, is that an annual return?
Yes, an annual return. Effectively, you take the equity divided by the net cash flow after debt service to come up with the numbers, yeah.
So just, if I had heard earlier, or I thought I heard, that you could get the financing at around ninety-five, ninety-seven units, based on what you're saying, that's not accurate?
No, you can't.
All right, thank you.
You can't get enough, you can't get enough dollars, the equity required would be so much, you could never get your money back, if you will.
Thank you.
And that doesn't take into consideration any other hidden costs in building it?
I'm sorry, what?
It doesn't take into consideration any other hidden costs in building it on your way?
Right. We put a, you know, when we structure one of these, you have all your, you've got your land, your soft, your hard contingencies, come up with a number, and so we try to build that. We build all the costs and we have to. And then effectively, we go into a construction lender, get a loan, eighty, eighty-five percent loan to cost, the balance of that has to be equity, and that's where you've got to get the return, and you need that one twenty-five to make that work. So, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So I guess I was back on the, on the factors. The, and again, there's a lot of risk as far as, we're making assumptions on the footings that the, that the piles are going to work, and that we don't run into additional problems like they did with the bridge and all. So there was, or some other hidden environmental contamination that we didn't find, that we find when we dig and all that.
You referenced problems with the bridge. I have some recollection that there was some issue with a footing on the bridge or something that was problematic.
Oh, they basically hit like a cliff. I mean, they had a huge overrun on the Aurora Bridge, because, I mean, I don't know if their geotechnical study was bad or whatever, but it was, I don't know if they had to go down like two hundred feet or something?
Yeah, bedrock.
They had to go something like two hundred feet to bedrock. We're hoping we're more like sixty or so?
Sorry?
Yeah, so we're banking on being a lot less than that. So, you know, we, using our best prognostication, but, you know, there is risk, because we don't really, you know, we're doing our, based on the, we do have, you know, the geotechnical report that's in the environmental assessment form, so that's what we're relying on and all. As far as the.
And at what point in the project would that be discovered if it were to be an issue? Before or after the remedial stuff is done?
I think after, because the way it will work is we're going to cover the site, or, you know, where it has to be covered. Then we'll have what's called a site management plan, and that governs when you dig through the cap. So if we dig through the cap to put in the piles, then, you know, we'll be digging deep, and then we'll, we would find out if we unexpectedly hit contamination, let's hope we don't, or that we have to go deeper with our piles than was expected, which is what happened with the bridge. But, I mean, that's why, based on that, I mean, we did do the geotechnical report, so we're with a good firm, so we're hoping that that's accurate, but that's where we would discover it.
All right, so the first thing that happens is you go in and, in simplified version, you go in and you cap everything?
Yes.
Then you start actually doing the construction?
Yeah, although part, part of it would be integrated, like the parking lots, we probably would do, that would be the cap in lieu of the two feet of clean soil, you would do the parking lot, and possibly some of the buildings you might do at the same time, because the building, the concrete for the building can be substituted for the two feet of clean fill. So, you know, we, it's possible it would be coordinated where maybe the first building, you would be putting in the piles and the concrete for the building at the same time as you're finishing the environmental. But probably be going back later to, you know, remove the cap or whatever, where the other buildings were, so. That happened, that's what we did over on, at South Point Cove in Penfield on Arunac quite Bay. We capped the site, started building, and then right now went back and removed some of the cap to put in buildings over the brownfield. Seems a very similar sort of situation. Okay. As far as substantial, for looking at the overall site, it's a thirty percent increase in density, and it's really just going to be concentrated on the one lot, is true, but we don't think that's substantial, especially when you consider the fact that we're taking away density from the city lots that we could have used. All we're doing is trying to make it in a position that makes more sense for the town and for the neighbors and everybody. And then the setbacks really only affect the applicant. It's not like we're doing setbacks from a neighbor's property and all. Physical environmental conditions, it's going to be a green development, we're going to improve conditions, because we're going to remediate and develop the brownfield, we're going to add trees and landscaping. The planning board has already found that there would not be a significant environmental impact. So between the cleanup and the, and the green development practices, including permeable pavement and underground storage for water, things like that, really be a real positive for the environment.
One second, you said that you can be using permanent pavement for, for the parking lots, so the water will seep down into the brownfield area, even though you'd be replacing with topsoil, whereas we have going down to the bedrock. So what is the barrier that will stop the water contamination in the deep brownfield from going into the river and affecting the nearby waterway?
Excuse me, Andre, do you mind if I just interrupt just for a quick second? A couple of things, New York State DEC is going to monitor any and all construction-related and site-related activity on the site to make sure that it's compliant with the brownfield cleanup program. And so that's DEC's job to make sure that all regulations related to the brownfield cleanup are monitored, and that's really more of an issue that would be addressed by the site plan, and was addressed already in the SEACR document. I just don't want to make sure that we're not confusing folks at home that SEACR was already addressed. I apologize for the interruption.
But if you don't mind, it is a great question. Because the brownfield, the brownfield cap is not like a landfill cap, in a landfill, like a garbage dump, you put on an impermeable layer, where there's, I think it's one times ten to the minus second permeability, like very impermeable. So you don't want water going through to generate leachate. With, this is a brownfield track four cleanup, and the goal is not necessarily to stop water from seeping through. The goal is a physical separation from, of the public from the contaminants. So that's accomplished, and here the contaminants are semi-volatile and metal. And our studies indicated there's very little, very little transport into the Genesee River itself. The main issue is to keep people away from it, not being, having gardens, not having kids digging it, that kind of stuff, so. So anyways, and overall, we think this will be a really nice development, aesthetically pleasing. The last thing is self-created, it's not self-created. The landfill happened before the seventies, the geotechnical conditions were created by the Ice Age, so we really, you know, these are, these are conditions that run with the land, and we really had nothing to do with it. We're building in accord with the, with the comprehensive plan and the zoning. So overall, we think it's a great project, we meet the standards, but we really do need this increased density to make this a feasible property, or excuse me, a feasible project to go through. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here to, you're finished with your presentation, correct?
Yes, thank you very much.
Anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application?
I live at thirty-seven Barron's Road, which is about a mile and a quarter from the project, about one block off of Thomas Avenue. I'm very much in favor of this project, and I have been for a long time. I drive into Greece every week or so, and I pass at least two or three different projects that are going on. I don't see any development projects going on in Rochester. Two of those projects went on vintage and latter road or apartment, so that tells me that there is a demand for this type of construction. But the biggest thing is, it's going to increase the tax base, which will have a tendency of reducing my taxes, and that's the most important thing, but I think it's a great project.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application?
My name is Joanne Mudge. I reside at eighty Beacon View Court. This is a little bit impromptu, but I've been here before, before the zoning board, and I've expressed my dissatisfaction, opposition to Lighthouse Point. My strongest argument is that the density calculation has been manipulated by the developer. My interpretation is that according to the zoning code, it's, you take the building, the buildings, two lots. it's, you take the, uh, building, the buildings, two lots are gonna have the two buildings erected on those two lots. That should be the values you should be using in order to, uh, calculate the maximum allowable density. What the developer has done is he's included city property, not Arundic quite property, so why it's that value in the calculation, and number two, he's also including another lot, Arundic quite property, but there's, there will not be any building on that lot. So in my opinion, that is a manipulation of the zoning code calculation. Now, in terms of this property, city property about the apartments, that, uh, that the spokespeople from Lighthouse Point said that it can be as high whatever, it could be up to 50 apartments, I call that a non-qualified opinion. I think the city of Rochester should be part of this conversation. To do anything less would not, uh, would, would, and to do anything less would be misleading this board, and I don't want to see the board mislead it. So when you talk about the city of Rochester, I think they have to participate in this conversation and not have a non-qualified opinion. Okay, the economics, I'm very concerned about the economics and about the business environment in the town of Arundic quite. We have had other, uh, projects, Melanie Center, that, um, has cost this town a lot of money. What I heard right now is a very slim profit margin, if not, because there are hidden costs. They're gonna make this project a deficit and probably, um, have an incomplete abandoned product, project, and then what do we have? Another eyesore for the town of Arundic quite. I think our variances are for a maximum allowable density, uh, will guard against of business failure when you take into consideration the economics of this project.
May I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't it make sense that that would be the reverse of your comment? That the, I'm over here, it would be the reverse of your comment, you're worried about, you're, you're saying that if you keep them to 95, that it would be more feasible for it to be profitable? That's what your point is, versus adding the additional uh, units and where they couldn't be profitable. I, I would think the opposite would be.
No, okay, this is what I'm, I'm saying. Thank you for bringing that up. Number one, I, I do believe that, um, a responsible building project is acceptable to me. And what would be acceptable to me is to be within the zoning code of maximum density, which the calculation is 85, not 95, as purported by the developer. Okay, so that is what I'm saying right now, what I would be in favor of. When we talk about the economics, hearing about, um, that it's a slim profit margin at, at 125 unit apartments, that throws a red flag right up. Why take that biscuit, business risk? It doesn't make economic sense. Have I answered your question?
Well, you have, you've given it a reason, but I don't know that it's a good one, in my opinion. I, I, I just believe that, uh, in a volume situation, you're, you know, they're gonna see a better return on their investment, and would, would make it, um, easier to build and easier to, uh, uh, keep going and, and have it, uh, maintain.
I, I see your point.
I, you know, evidently financially, talking to the gentleman that used to be the banker there, or, or knows the numbers, um, you know, looking at it at that point of view, and as a, you know, somewhat of a business background myself, um, you know, I could see their point in adding the units to make them cost-effective.
But does it have to exceed the zoning variance by over 30, 40%? Does that make sense?
I don't think that, that really has anything to do with the actual cost and the profitability and the cost of, of doing the project. I, I think the, the fact that
Excuse me, Mr. LaPerry, can you just use your mic?
Yep.
Thank you.
I think that the, the fact that the zoning allowance, be it 95 or, or
Eighty-five?
You know, uh, um, being that number is just, um, a calculation, but I don't think they took that into, I don't think financially it was, that was based on a size area. It wasn't necessarily based on a, a cost per unit, um, calculation, so.
Right.
Even though you're trying to find, follow the zoning code to the letter, um, it's based on what fits in, you know, what fits in the area, but the extra units make it fit financially, uh, uh, for them as developers, and I guess that's the, the differences and
Right, right. Financially, I can see your point, but on, on the, the other aspect is it changes the characteristic of, of an established neighborhood, of a single-family homes. And virtually visualize it, it's gonna be four buildings, 74 feet tall, and it's an undersized lot for a massive building. It towers over the neighborhood, and that's something, I know that's not economics, but visually, and the reality is, it's a bad fit for the neighborhood.
Again, you know, everybody has their opinion on the, on the look and the style and, and, and what looks pretty and what doesn't, and I appreciate your opinion, but, I mean, there's two large towers on the other side of the river that, that go 20 stories in the air, um, that, you know, are, are just to- straight towers. These are somewhat, uh, pleasing buildings, aesthetically pleasing buildings, and hopefully they'll do the right thing and make them look that
And just for the people who are watching at home, I mean, I think it should be noted that single-family homes that are on Beacon, Beacon View Court, this property cannot have single-family homes like that. So it will have to be something different, like multifamily dwellings or the unit itself. But to suggest that the single-family homes on Beacon View Court would be continued in this area, that's something that's not allowed because it is a brownfield. And when we talk about the density issue, density is based on surface. When you go under the surface, and when you get to contamination, and you have the requirement to have, you know, pile driving, I guess, when you have to do that, that's what I think Mr. LaPerry is talking about, having to factor those in, and that's something that the zoning code, zoning code looks at surfaces and measurements of space. They do not look at costs that are underground. So, we can keep going back and forth, I mean, I'd like to hear, you've given some of these points before, and I think that your, your presentation today is very, it's a lot more concise than, um, some other times other people have presented, so.
Right.
I'm interested to hear more, thank you.
And the other thing is, I would like to expand that, not only is it Beacon View Court, but we have single-family homes in the River Harbor District, which is Thomas Avenue, Eaton Road, Thomas Avenue, um, Patton Woods, so it's just not Beacon View, it's the neighborhood.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the River Harbor District?
Correct.
And what is the, in the River Harbor, is that limited to single-family, is it?
No, River Harbor includes, a, a single-family is one of the uses that's allowed. It also includes multifamily, um, and I'll just, did you want to know the boundary of where the River Harbor?
No, I just, because this is in the River Harbor, right?
Correct, yeah, so the, and the proposed development is in conformance with the, the variety of permitted uses. There's also marine uses, water-related, um, development, commercial development, mixed-use development. And then the code goes on further to describe, um, design guidelines for development and limitations, and, um, bulk and use requirements related to each of those uses, residential versus non-residential. Um, so single-family is only, is one of the many uses that are allowed in this district.
Alright, and going back to the earlier point that you made right at the beginning, which, and Mr. Knopf and Mr. Shabba sure will correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the city was invited to participate in the SEACR process and declined, correct?
They actually are now deemed an interested agency, um, because no act, there's no discretionary decision-making that the city of Rochester needs to make for the town of Arundic quite to continue with its review of this project. Um, and so because they're no longer an involved agency with the proposed project, they're just interested. So it's not a matter of, it's, they don't have a discretionary decision to make in the proposed project.
And I think the point that they were trying to make was that what they're looking to do, as I understand it, and again, they'll correct me if I'm wrong, but they're trying to consolidate in as small, that may not seem like the appropriate word, but as small an area as possible, the maximum number of units that they can comfortably put in that area with a promise that they're not going to put them on those other three, and what I think Mr. Shabba was pointing out was that on the city-owned lots, they would be able, if assuming we denied
Not city-owned, the properties
Located in the city, the lots in the city. If we were to deny the variances and, and, uh, they determined that they couldn't proceed economically under the code, I think what they're saying is if they wanted to go ahead with that part, they could develop those two lots in the city without any density restrictions and could put more towers in there like are across the river in order to make it economically feasible to support what they wanted to do. That's where, and what they're saying is they're willing to trade that. In other words, give up the right to develop those other parcels with whatever, there's density restrictions on the one that's in Arundic quite, but there are none in the city. If we can help them with the, with this variance to make it feasible as they believe it to be feasible, although the numbers seem to be kinda small, um, in terms of profit margin, um, as you were pointing out. I think that's where that comes in. It's not that they're saying, um, that the city has anything to do with what we're deciding, they don't.
And they're also not technically, and I know the comment that you had made initially was that they were using the land located in the city to offset the density requirements in the town, and that's not true either. So the, the density variances that they're getting in the town are based on the development on the townland, the total area of townland and the town regulations. I think the point that the applicant was making, um, just as Mr. Chairman said, when they referenced the, the parcels located in the city was just that they have those additional parcels that uh, will be adjacent in the area of this project that they're willing to put a, a legal deed restriction on that will run with the land forever, that they won't construct buildings on those parcels. So not that that's offsetting the density requirements in the town, but just that's an, an additional amenity that they're offering, that those parcels will not have any buildings on them.
Well, in listening to the conversation before, I, I heard, and correct me if that's not, uh, clearly stated, is that there would be some kind of structure or parking? Um, what am I hearing? Are there grain bead buildings, or is this? What's, is apps, can we have absolutely no building, no parking? What I would like to see is a natural setting, maybe some landscaping.
I'm sure the applicant will address that when they get the chance to come back up.
Okay.
Just for clarification, are we talking about the third parcel on the Arundic quite side, or were you talking about the city parcel? With the question you just asked about the area with no parking, you just asked a question about a minute ago.
What Mr. Knopf had, um, suggested or recommended or pledged, or however you want to term it, is that city, um, now it's located in the city of Rochester, it's owned by Mr. Gilbert, is that true?
Yes.
Yes, okay, and I think that was, that was the property that he was referring to, that, that they would be willing to, um, put something in the deed, uh, no structure, but then I also heard, well, maybe parking.
Well, it depends on what the legal definition of the structure is.
Okay.
Is what he was, because a, I think a pathway could in, in some sense be construed, considered a structure.
Yeah.
When I say a structure, I'm thinking about something with walls and a roof.
Right, that, that's my understanding, but what I would like to see is some kind of landscaping or natural setting.
I would like to point out that that area is outside of the town's purview, and so there's nothing that the applicant can or should be providing to the town on land outside of the town.
Right, and it's been specifically stated that that, that area is outside of this project, so that's not what's being reviewed at all. So, again, we're not talking about any sort of requirements on the development of that parcel, it's just a, an amenity that the applicant's offering that they will sort of as an add-on, uh, put a deed restriction on that property, and I think that the board would be looking to accept that.
Okay, thank you.
It's an uncompensated bonus.
Right.
Okay. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone who'd like to just talk to us in general without being opposed or in favor? Would the applicant like to address any of the concerns that were raised during the hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just briefly, oh, on the, on the nine, the density 95 that was site-wide, we could come up with a development in front of the planning board that would actually have buildings go across property lines to take advantage of the whole 95 and space things out a little differently. We're, we just think what we've presented to the planning board is a better design, but we could do that if we had to. And, and again, if we didn't get the variance, we would have to, the only way this project's gonna be feasible is if we put another building right behind the neighbor's property, which we didn't want to do, we thought they'd actually think this was a better idea.
And that would be on the city-owned parcels that you're talking about?
Yes, we'd have to go to the city for site plan and all that.
And you'd have to start all over again with SEACR and everything else with this project, because right now there's no city parcels being developed.
Yeah, well, I don't know, but, I mean, we'd have to go into the city with the site plan and just say, hey, we want to build on this seven tenths of an acre and the other three tenths over here, and here's what we want to do as a separate development, I don't know. But, but we're not doing that, so we're not
City doesn't have a density restriction, right?
Right, they don't have a density, because it's the same zoning as, uh, like the harbor, their harbor project, so I think they got rid of a lot of the restrictions because they wanted them to, you know, have a lot of latitude, frankly.
Develop like towers of condos or whatever.
Right, right, they, they talked about it like a, was it a 10-story tower at one point or whatever? Um, we are saying that the, um,
Oh, I do have a question while we're on that subject. The city, the, the Gilbert parcels that are located geographically in the city of Rochester, do they extend to the bank of the Genesee River, or are they, does it end somewhere before you get to the river?
I wish the answer was they extended to the river, but they don't. There, there's, um, city-owned property between them and the river, um, so.
They extend, how close, there, there's a road that goes down by the docks, is, is it about up to there or further back?
Maybe, Mr. Shabba can answer how close.
Yeah, the existing condition, if you were to travel the Voyager Marina, that gravel path that heads south, these parcels would be, uh, east and adjacent to that.
Alright.
About 150 feet away from the river.
Away from the river?
Correct.
But closer to the roadway, what, about 30, 40 feet?
Yeah, right, right around there.
So how far back are the buildings gonna be from the river, roughly?
Uh, the new, the proposed building, I would say is at least 200 feet from the river.
Okay. I guess I didn't realize there was gonna be that much space
Yeah.
Between them.
So if you're, right now, that gravel parking lot, that where all the ragweed starts, the building, the building is east of there.
Okay.
And just on the question on the, um, the deed restrictions, we said we would place on four parcels. The one parcel in the town that's part of the development, I guess it's your parcel number three, and the three parcels in the city that we wouldn't, we would not build habitable buildings, so there's buildings that people would live in and all. We're not saying we wouldn't put a parking lot or a road or something like that. We were gonna put a parking lot on the, the one in the town, um, you know, that's part of the plan. And, and, um, you know, as far as in the city, we're pledging to not, we're not gonna put more apartments, more buildings where people would live, we're not
So let's, let's play this out just a little bit, um, parking lot?
It's possible, yes.
Habitable structure, no?
No.
Enclosed garage with garage doors, it's right in the middle there.
Uh, no.
No?
No, we wouldn't do that. But, and, and we're probably gonna, I mean, I'm sure we're gonna have trees and, you know, plant life and whatever, that we're probably gonna do some landscaping in the city, I know it's outside your jurisdiction, but we would, that would be our intent, but I'm not gonna say we would never put a parking space there.
You might have a picnic shelter or something like that.
That's possible, yeah, that's possible, or benches or whatever, you know, that's possible.
And, and just for, um, the board's clarification, the lot in the town of Arundic quite, that would be, um, kept as deed restricted and with no further future development is what's being, uh, 45 Patton Wood Drive, and that's that, what's being, uh, 45 Pattonwood Drive, and that's that, um, the, sort of the, the narrower strip that runs, um, the length of the project site, just, um, as far west. If you're looking at the map, it's the very top, but you're actually looking, um-
The west side.
The west side of the property, and it runs that strip, and it's a, um, a .6 acre parcel, I believe.
But we are planning on parking and-
And there is parking proposed, correct.
And that location, you know, I mean, if the planning board doesn't approve our plan, we may be back, but, you know, that's, that's our plan to not put a building on that, uh, habitable, habitable building. So, and bottom line, I think as Mr. LePerry was suggesting, it's basically, we have some extraordinary costs, we need more units to spread out the costs, or it's not feasible. That's, that's the bottom line. So we, we, we think this would be a great project, and we ask that you approve the, the variance. We've been, we've been having fun coming to town meetings for a long time, but, um, we, we really hope that, uh, we can get a vote on this tonight. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to add one comment, sounded like some of the comments of the board had some engineering questions and things like that. Um, working with the planning board as we have, uh, we did receive a letter from Lobella, the town engineer, dated, uh, October 27th, and had a list of comments related to the site plan, and there weren't any showstoppers there. Uh, we're working towards, uh, meeting all the goals of those comments, and, uh, we'll be presenting that to the planning board at the next workshop, so just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Okay.
So when do we call the question on this?
I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Good.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, I gotta go through the course, the, the town-
Okay. So when do we call the question on this? I was just going to say that the, uh, having heard from the, the developer in response to the public input, we're now closing the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will take a, about a five-minute recess and then come back and deliberate with respect to the applications that are, remain before us tonight. So we're in recess.
And we're accepting it, right. Granting easement to your neighbor, you, and you can't require that to take you-
Well, no, that keeps everybody off because I do get it off.
Four? All right, we have three cases with respect to the Lighthouse Point application. The first case relates to Lot 1, which is 951 Thomas Avenue, and is requesting a zero rear building setback and a zero setback for the parking lot, both of which, I believe, adjoin and would be connected to Lot 2. Is that correct?
Correct.
Logical numbering even.
Just for the board's knowledge, the lot number referencing is what staff internally came up with, just to keep it straight in everybody's mind.
I wonder it's logical.
Well, thank you. I try.
Then the second application pertains to Lot 2, which is 1027 Thomas Avenue. This is the lot that has the density variance application associated with it, and also a parking lot and lot line setback variance, and those variances, I believe, are adjoining to Lot 3. And then Lot 3 is the third one, which is 45 Pattonwood, and that is a variance for a zero proposed setback for the parking lot, and that adjoins parcel 2.
Correct. Actually, I'm going to hand you the printout from the -- that has maybe more current calculations, because for Lot 3, on just making -- maybe perhaps making a reference to the site plan, sheet 5 of 10, because that provided the measurements and the distances to the line. In Lot 3, on the site plan sheet 5 of 10, as provided to the town, there's a zero foot required, and then also an unknown distance needed on the west side of that parking lot. So that one strip goes zero to the east, and then there's -- it doesn't quite get to the edge, and I'll --
Uh huh.
I'm just going to hand this to you.
You should see the town board when they pledge.
Okay, so here we go. So here are the measurements where there's setback.
Okay.
And so I think maybe the safer way is referring to the site plan.
All right, and that's this, right? Sheet 5 of 10?
5 of 10, the site plan.
Does everyone have sheet 5 of 10 in front of them? It's in the black notebooks that I think we had in June?
Due to July. I'm sorry.
Then I guess we got them in July.
Yes, sorry.
It's all right.
Just like to...
Keep me on my toes. It's late. All right. This has already received a negative declaration for secret purposes, so no further action is required by our board. Does anyone, with respect to the Lot 1 variances application, wish to make a motion? Seeing none, I will move that we grant the variances that are requested with respect to this application pertaining to 951 Thomas Avenue. The applicant is requesting a zero setback for the rear building line and a zero setback for the parking line. The building that it's referencing is the proposed three-story, 14-unit building that would front on Thomas Avenue, and the parking lot that would adjoin that building to the south. The building, although it's a zero setback, it would abut what appears to be an undeveloped area that would then connect to the drive and entrance for the larger building on Lot 2, and the parking lot would connect with the internal roadways or drives on Lot 2. The granting of the specific variances in this case would not result in any change in the character of the neighborhood, because there is maintained at the other aspects of the lot setbacks from the railroad, the former railroad property from Thomas Avenue, and from the lots to the north are all continued to have setbacks within the variance. This is a -- this setback would pertain solely to an internal lot line that, when the property is developed, if it's developed, would not be visible to anyone other than a surveyor or a banker. The alternatives that would not require a variance would result in the building being less able to be set back from Thomas Avenue, and would result in the parking lot having to be smaller, which would not be favorable for either the occupants of the building or those who might be patronizing. I believe that would -- is intended to have some, perhaps, commercial development in it. The request is not substantial when it's measured and looked at in the context of the overall project. It will not have any adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. It is self-created in the fact that this is the way the developers chosen to lay out the development, but overall, they have attempted to develop within the restrictions and parameters that they faced by virtue of situations over which they had no control. I think Mr. Knoff referenced that some of them were created prior to 1970, and others were created during the Ice Age, which predates the zoning ordinance. Is there any -- does anyone wish to second the motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. All the members of the board continue to be present. The next application, or aspect of the application, pertains to 1027 Thomas Avenue. This is the large parcel that is... Let me get a Pattonwood address, not a...
This is Thomas Avenue.
Yeah, Thomas Avenue. It seems to front more on Pattonwood Drive than Thomas. It's the large parcel. It's the parcel on which they propose to construct the largest of the buildings, and this is the one that requires the density variance and the parking lot and lot line setback variances. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we grant the variance as requested with the following findings. The possible change to the neighborhood character by the variances that are being considered is not an adverse change to the neighborhood character. We're talking about the number of units that can be placed within a limited area. If the units were larger in size, there would be fewer units. If they were smaller in size, there would be a greater number of units. The applicant has testified that, given the environmental conditions which are present at the property and known today, as opposed to those that might later be discovered, and the -- is that geothermal?
Technical.
Geotechnical aspects with engineering studies and things, that in order for the project to be minimally economically feasible, they require the units that are being proposed, which on this lot is 111 units. As a condition of granting this variance, I would propose acceptance of the applicant's offer to limit development on the other lots which are under contract to be purchased.
So it's Lot 3 within the town, and then the other lots that are located within the city?
Let's see, Lot 3 in town, 2 in city.
And the address on that third lot was 45 Pattonwood, if you wanted to include that?
I've only got three lines, and she has to read my writing, so... Oh, that's city. Okay. I was having trouble reading it all right. The alternatives that don't require a variance, the applicant could build a unit on this lot that would conform with the density requirement, and then, absent their offer, would be able to build a significant number of other units that would be in close proximity to that, but not subject to any authority from our town in terms of development that could result in a much denser overall development in that area than what the applicant is proposing. It is a substantial request in terms of the number of units that they're asking, but again, it's within the confines of the structure which conforms with the zoning ordinance in all respects, with the exception of the density. So they could build the structure as high as they want with smaller units or larger units and conform, but the applicant's testimony, which certainly appeared to be based on significant experience and familiarity with the economics and the realities of investment, would not be economically feasible without the number of units that they are requesting. The density in terms of the number of units that are being requested would not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions. The applicant has undergone for several months the seeker process, and the results of that process were a negative declaration with respect to environmental impact. Again, the situation is somewhat self-created, because the applicant wants to build the structure as it has set forth on the proposal, and in order to do that, it needs those number of units to make it economically viable, but the economic viability is affected by conditions that are beyond the control of the applicant, namely the environmental conditions that require significant environmental remediation work and which also limit and prevent development in most other manners other than being proposed by the applicant, and which... and those geotechnical issues that go back to, in some respects, I guess, to the Ice Age. The applicant, through its offer of non-development, or limited development, I should say, but for non-habitable restrictive development of other lots, has offered to remediate in some respects what other adverse effect might otherwise be possible. Does anyone wish to second that?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. We all continue to be present. The third aspect of the application relates to the third lot, which is designated as 45 Pattonwood Drive. This is the westernmost part of the... The north and westernmost part of the area. It's north of the fourth lot, which we haven't talked about, because there's nothing pertaining to the fourth lot in front of us. This variance is for a parking lot and lot line setback of zero feet. And again, this pertains to the parking lot and the lot line where the third parcel joins the second parcel from the...
On the south side.
On the south side. From the third parcel to the south boundary line of both parcel 2 and parcel 3, and to the west, it appears that the parking lot conforms, otherwise conforms, to the setback requirements. And again, this is an internal circumstance that would only relate to that particular parcel.
And this is the one where the setback varies from zero to a number that's as shown on the sheet 5 of the site plan, so that's what we're going to reference in the approval, right? Because this is not...
All right. So does someone want to make a motion with respect to this application?
You've been doing so well so far.
Aye. Hearing none, I will make a motion that we grant this variance to the extent as shown on site sheet 5 of 10 on the site plan. The... This variance will have no change on the character of the neighborhood. The alternative that doesn't require a variance would essentially mean that the parking lot's going to be a lot smaller, and there'd be a lot less ability to use it. It's not a substantial request in the overall context of the project. It has already been determined through the seeker process that it will not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions if granted, and as with the other variances, it is self-created to the extent that this is the way the applicant has chosen to configure the development, but that choice was governed to a large extent by conditions that were beyond the control of the applicant, and which are in part environmentally... The result of environmental circumstances that require remediation of contaminated soil that limit development, that limit uses that can be... That the property can be put to, and which are attributable to those environmental factors and Ice Age factors that predate and are beyond the control of the zoning ordinance. Does anyone wish to make a motion to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. We all continue to be present. Nobody is absent. With the minutes that we... Or with the packet of materials that we received for tonight's meeting, we received a draft of minutes pertaining to our meeting last month, October 3 of this year, as everyone had a chance to review the draft of those minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we accept them as presented.
Certainly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? They are approved. Seven votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. We all continue to be present. Nobody is absent. We are adjourned.
Very good.
Good luck tomorrow.